This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, Dan.
Hi, Dan.
Hi, guys.
Dan, you have the cleanest office of anyone.
I have the... Yeah, but you're looking at the backside.
Oh, oh.
No, it's... I try to keep a clean desk, otherwise I become unorganized.
Doesn't help me.
Hi, Eileen.
Hi, Eileen.
Hi, Harold. Hey, Dan.
You know if you knew that John wasn't going to be on the call.
Yeah, John's not coming in today.
Okay.
Well, you just need one more and then you have quorum. And there's your quorum.
We're good.
Hey, William.
Hi, William.
Hey, good evening. Sorry, I was muted. How were you all tonight?
Good.
That's good to hear. I'm crooked. I don't know why I'm crooked. Doesn't look great.
You just need a little key light and you're fine.
Yeah, I'm crooked. Okay.
Your laptop, your laptop is bent back. Yep. Now push the whole thing back from you.
Nah, I gotta go back. It's okay. I'm good. All right. There you go. That's better. Has anyone been to the Little Pub yet?
Has anyone what?
Been to the Little Pub restaurant yet? The one that we're going to be talking about tonight, where Marty used to be?
Harold, I think in the interest of time, if you want to start, you could. And Christina can join.
We have caller three and caller five. Is either of those Christina? She's the only one we're missing.
Hold on. Somebody just sent me a text. Who was? Oh, so Sandra, Sandra needs the link.
Oh, yeah. How do I give her the link? I sent her by email.
I'll text her now.
Okay.
All right. It's funny, you got conversed in all these different, whether it be Zoom, whether it be GoToMeetings.
I know WhatsApp. I'm getting mixed up. I call Zoom meetings, GoToMeetings.
Yeah.
No, have any of you guys been to the Little Pub? We're talking about them tonight.
We haven't. And I think we should hold off any discussion on it until the public meeting, public hearing starts.
Okay.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening, Christina. We're waiting for you.
Sorry, I was having some technical difficulties.
That's okay. So we have two people that are on the phone. Daniel, I mean, David Driscoll and Nicole Page-Fort. Do you know, are they our guests tonight?
My name is David Driscoll. I live at 59 Jefferson Street. I'm very interested, party in the conversation regarding the Platypus Partners petition.
Okay. Remember that you are a guest right now, so.
Okay.
You're not allowed to speak. At some point, we will call, I believe, Susmita, correct?
Yes, I'm going to mute everyone except the commissioners right now.
And we're ready to start.
Yeah.
Good evening. This is Harold Watson, Chairman of the Planning Commission. Due to the coronavirus 19 pandemic, we are conducting this meeting on GoToMeetings.com on Tuesday, July 20th, 2020, at 7:06 PM. The quorum for this meeting is three, and I will now call the following elected officials to speak up as present. Christina Kazanzas, Zone 1.
Here.
William Boyd, Zone 2.
Here.
Harold, myself, Harold Watson, Zone 3.
Here.
Dan Sem.
Present.
Zone 4, and John Staley, we know is absent tonight. In addition, we, I believe, are being joined. We haven't yet, but we will be joined by Sandra Zalik as our alternate. We also have tonight with us Susmita Atoda, our Town Planner, and Eileen Marsh, who is our Recording Secretary. I believe we're having two guests tonight. Susmita, correct? Are there any presentations tonight?
Well, the applicant's attorney said he has a conflicting meeting tonight, so there is no guests.
Okay.
We just have to discuss this.
All right. Before I call the meeting to order, I'd like to remind everyone to raise their hands, and if they would like to be recognized by the chair and wait to be recognized and called on each and every time throughout the meeting, please identify yourself by name and title each time you would like to speak. This is per Governor Lamont's executive order, which allows for us to conduct virtual meetings. It's also because we are recording this. The public is free to listen, but may speak only at the invitation of the chair. With that said, I call to order this monthly meeting of the Stratford Planning Commission. The first item on our agenda is approval of minutes. Everybody should have had a copy of that. Will someone give me a... Yes?
Motion to approve the minutes?
A second, anybody?
I'll second Dan Sem.
All right. All in favor? Anybody opposed? Okay, so we are now moving to... Oh, that was accepted. We're now moving to our next administrative item. Susmita, should I add that new agenda item here?
Chairman Harold Watson, I'm just going to speak out loud to the audience here who do not know the process. So this is an administrative review meeting of the Planning Commission. There is no public hearing item on the agenda tonight. Typically, by statute, a planning commission is required to review zone change petitions and submit their report to the zoning commission, which will hold a public hearing on the proposed zone change petition and camp site plan review. Having said that, we have actually received some letters from residents and some people here who have expressed an interest in the application. So as an exception, you don't have... It's not going to be a public hearing process, but you're welcome to encourage public comment if you would like after or after you've reviewed it or before you review it. But for the future, if the commissioners choose to go this path for other zone change discussions and other planning agenda items, I think we should advertise it on the agenda as a public workshop or a public meeting before these administrative reviews take place, so that everyone in the public is aware that, you know, there is some kind of discussion happening from the public also at these administrative review meetings.
So, Susmita, may I get your assistance here? Could we do that directly before or after the approval of minutes?
You're welcome to have a public input session right now. And then, after you are done with the public input session, then you can start your agenda items. But you have to waive the rules to add it to the agenda.
Okay, but we're going to add this permanently to the agenda if we have... Yes, ma'am, Christina.
Just a point of clarification about the differences between all these terms. Can, can we just get some clarification on the difference between public comment session, a public workshop, or a public meeting? Or, you know, any other terms that we're going to use, and then just sort of be clear and consistent with the terms that we're using, so that the commissioners and anybody in the public who are listening understand what the difference is between all of these different types of public comment vehicles.
Susmita, please.
Yes, so I can answer that question for you. So if it's going to be a public hearing, then it has to be advertised in the newspaper twice. Once, at least 15 days before the Public Planning Commission meeting, and then the second time, at least two days before. The abutters of the property should be informed as well by the applicant. And in a public hearing, what happens is the commission opens the item for discussion. Public are allowed to come and speak for up to three minutes on their opinion. There is no back and forth discussion that happens between the commission members and the audience. It's just the public testifying. You close the discussion and then you open it up for your review as a commission. Whereas in a public meeting, it is an interactive discussion between the public and the commissioners. It could happen without having any legal advertisements. And this is more like a planning meeting where you seek input on a plan or a study. Public workshops are more like hands-on, where people are given some material to review and maybe seeking their preferences on certain items on the flip charts that are being displayed there or posters, and having a more interactive discussion among the public themselves also. Like you can arrange, if it was in an in-person meeting, we typically arrange five or six roundtables where, you know, each roundtable has four or five residents sitting at the table and discussing among themselves the topic at hand. So these are the differences between a public hearing, public meeting, and public workshop. When a planning commission is undertaking amendment to the POCD or it's undertaking a small area study or a subplanning study, that's when we typically have public workshops or public meetings on the agenda item. This zone change is mostly for, you know, looking at consistency with the Plan of Conservation and Development, which was already approved and adopted by the Planning Commission after significant public input. And it's a 10-year longstanding document. Having said that, if the commission feels like, maybe land use-wise, you need more insight on how the proposed land use and the plan is meeting the current situation on ground, you could host a public meeting anytime to seek input on the land use decisions alone. Thank you.
In the past, we primarily have done public input as an informal way of gathering information, because ultimately, we don't normally... What we vote on is not the final vote. It's either going to go to town council, or it's going to go to zoning. So what we're, what we are doing is referring our broadest view of what materials are out there. I think it's, I think it's important that the public be able to interject themselves in at this state to essentially remind us of the bigger picture. And I think in the past that it has worked well, because we do not have the administrative ability to do advertising for all of these events. And if you know from our non-virtual meetings, it's rare that we would ever get anybody in the audience. And when we did do those, audience, people who were in the audience, we generally allowed them the time to make, to make a comment, to make comments.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take the opportunity to point out that there are now officially more members of the audience than actual commissioners on this call. So we've had that rare, that rare moment in time.
Okay.
Mark the date.
I don't have that list, but, okay.
There's, they're just, besides Ms. Page-Fort and Mr. Driscoll, there are five callers. Thank you, everybody, for coming. I just wanted to point that out. I thought it was ironic.
Okay. Well, good. I'm glad. So we now are bringing this up, because it was never done formally before. So is, I'm going to suggest that we do a public input right now and add that to our permanent administrative agenda. That means if we have our bringing up subjects that people are interested in, it gives them the opportunity to respond to us in form, in the form of a letter in advance, an email in advance, or actually getting onto our virtual call. So I think that it would make, it would make us a little, keep on our toes a little much, a little better. So is there anybody here who objects to that? Yes, Sandra?
Make a motion that we waive the rules to add that to our agenda.
Anybody second that?
I'd like to second that, Christina Kazanzas.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So that's unanimous. So we are going to add that actually as a 1A, and I will let Susmita renumber it the next time when we do that. So we now need to decide, are we going to... In general, there's a five-minute... Reading what I have read of the rules, there's been five-minute ability of audience to make their case known. There is also the ability of the chairman, when items get repetitive or things are off-topic, to ask that they stop and go on to the next person. Yes, ma'am, Sandra?
Make a motion that we limit discussion to three minutes per audience participant.
Okay.
I'll second that, Dan Sem, zoning 4.
And now we have to arrive at some virtual way of identifying these people and seeing who wants to speak. But before we do, I just want to make it very clear. We are not the zoning commission, and we are not the town council. Our job primarily is the POCD, which, once the POCD is written and accepted by the state, is what we follow. Oftentimes, our decisions are made based on the POCD, because that is our only legal underpinning to make our decisions. So if we vote in favor or against something, our vote, in almost all cases, goes to zoning, at which point they have to decide if they are, if they are going to react to it or not. And we can, by voting in a supermajority, we can cause them to have to bring it up and have to vote in a majority on what we brought up. But we don't have a big, strong arm. Where our major focus is, is in planning how the vision of the town exists in the future. And are the actions we take today those actions that are moving Stratford forward that are compatible with what is in our POCD? I think that hearing from the public on all of this is helpful to us, but I ask the public to try to be considerate of where the scope of our work is. Yes, Susmita?
If you may allow me, I can start with a letter that I received from Mr. Henry Bruce of 37 Jefferson Street.
Go ahead.
So I'm going to read it out aloud. Regarding Little Pub zoning petition. Residents of Lotship request that the zoning commission deny the application from the Little Pub of Stratford for a zone change from RS4 residential to WF waterfront business. Our reasons are due to lack of a plan, insufficient parking, and public safety concerns. Please note, we ran our own petition and had over 130 signatures from Stratford residents against this application from Little Pub. This zoning change petition has no plan explaining what Little Pub intends for the property now and in the future. Further, Little Pub already graded the property and installed an electrical panel without a town permit. Does this mean that Little Pub intends to use the property to set up tables and lighting to sell food and alcoholic beverages? What is Little Pub planning to do for the increased parking from all of the out-of-town visitors? That would be a big concern. There are no public restrooms for these lots, and Little Pub only has one small restroom to support customers in the restaurant. This will create a public safety issue that must be addressed prior to granting the petition or a permit for serving customers on the three lots. With the COVID-19 pandemic and the mayor's decision on April 12th, 2020 to restrict access to Lotship beaches to resident only, the seawall and the public beach area have become overrun by out-of-town people taking advantage of the open access to parking and the beach. The street and beach crowding are creating a public safety issue as large numbers of people are gathering, many without masks and no social distancing. Further above reason, we request you to deny the zone change petition as filed. As the staff to the planning department, I just want to make a note here that all the permits have been pulled by Little Pub for the electrical installation on the lot. And because it's a public meeting, we have an opportunity to give feedback back and forth. I'm just letting you know, as commission members, that there's no illegal work going on on that site.
Chairman Watson, just could we note for the record that his references to Little Pub should be replaced with Platypus Partners LLC? That's who the petitioner is. Little Pub is the email address within the petition, but the petitioner is actually Platypus.
I agree with Sandra. So we need to identify the proper, the proper names on here, so we're not confusing anybody.
Yes. Can we just agree to this? We need to vote it?
Friendly, no.
Okay. Do you want to do the next person, Susmita?
Yes, if Ms. Nicole Page-Fort would like to speak up. She may speak now.
But I'm concerned about the change, so I'm just going to be silent.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public?
David Driscoll would like to speak.
Okay.
Okay, my name is David Driscoll. I'm a 38-year resident of Jefferson Street in the Seawall area. I live about 100 yards off the Seawall. I'm concerned about the... Sorry, go ahead.
He had already stated his address earlier in the meeting.
Yes, 59 Jefferson Street. So I wanted to bring a couple of points with regard to the petition and its implication with the plan of conservation and development, which I think is in your, in your wheelhouse, as you just mentioned. We are currently seeing a tremendous overutilization of the infrastructure down here by the Seawall. There's insufficient parking. Traffic has been a tremendous problem. Speeding, all with the restaurants that are currently on that corner property operating at reduced volumes due to the COVID crisis. I am concerned that any further development on that corner will only exacerbate the situation that we have here. And, and when we mention that the plan of conservation and development is, is kind of your wheelhouse, the argument being made on the zoning petition by Platypus Properties is to bring the zone change into consistency with the POCD, page 21, map, and to consider a potential commercial use. So as Mr. Bruce points out, there is no plan that's currently been communicated. The conservation plan, a plan of conservation development speaks to other points beyond the map on page 21. It talks to considering impacts in paragraph 1.4. And I'm going to quote, it says, "The future land use recommendations subsequent zoning change have the potential to substantially impact the town's existing infrastructure and transportation capacities. Other areas which are targeted for more intense uses as they are redeveloped could potentially require expansion of utility infrastructure to stimulate and support this growth. The town of Stratford should prioritize the gradual expansion of infrastructure in these areas as needed and afforded to produce economic development."
David, what page do you want?
It's paragraph 1.4 of the plan of conservation development. I don't have the page reference. I'm sorry. But this is a direct quote from the document. So in addition to the cartoon map that Platypus Properties is pointing to, to be consistent with, I would argue that there's other considerations in the plan of conservation development that need to be considered, one of which is the infrastructure is currently insufficient. The other point I'd like to make is that the plan of conservation development was adopted in December of 2013. On June 20th, 2017, the Planning Commission approved a petition at 60 Beach Drive, one of the same properties, by Beachbound Properties LLC, looking for approval of a three-lot subdivision in the area that is on that map as potential WF zone. So there's this item that was an action of precedent by the planning committee to do something other than... to do something other than grant WF approval on that lot. There was also a petition that was approved for, and I don't have the meeting minutes from that meeting, but the old roller skating rink property across the street also highlighted in blue on the plan of conservation development map. The old roller skating property has been subsequently approved since passage of the P O C D for a townhouse development. So there's been two actions of precedent where the planning commission has deviated from that page 21 map to do something other than a WF zone in that area. So I would ask that you consider the infrastructure requirements, you know, the past precedent. And I would also ask that no action be taken until Platypus Partners comes forward and actually identifies what their intentions are for the development on that property so that it can get reasonable consideration with an understanding on the impact on the neighborhood area as well as on the park areas. The Seawall is a town park. There are 62 parking places, I believe, for use of town residents. And if those are overtaken by restaurant users, then we're going to eliminate the opportunity for town residents to enjoy a town park. So I'd ask you to give those considerations as you consider the Platypus petition.
Is there anybody else?
Only three minutes.
Thank you, David. Is there anybody else we have on the phone?
Yes, this is Gary Nelson, 76 West Hillside Avenue.
Gary, can you spell your last name, please?
Sure, N-E-L-S-O-N.
Oh, Nelson, okay, I'm sorry. Got it, thank you.
I'll be brief. I would just, I would basically support everything that Dave Driscoll just went over, so I won't be redundant by reviewing everything that Dave just said. But I will say that I am a 100% supporter of that. But I will say, as a resident of West Hillside, we're a small street. There's five houses on the street, two of which now are for sale. And I will say that in terms of the impact that this is having on our residential community, it is putting patients, the people who live here in this waterfront community in a position where there, you know, two of the five people are actively trying to sell their house because of the conditions that this has created. So I would support what Dave had to say and I would ask the committee to really take into consideration the needs of the neighborhood, the actual Stratford residents in your deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it? Do we have anybody else who hasn't spoken, would like to? Yes?
This is Joseph Satin, S-A-T-I-N. We own a piece of property which is contiguous with the Platypus site.
To the north? Or the west?
East.
We're on First Avenue.
Okay.
It's the second house on First Avenue.
Okay.
And the third house on First Avenue. I did a number of surveys of traffic and beach usage over the last month. The results of those surveys were presented to the city and the surveys indicate that without Little Pub being full and without Riley's being full. The Seawall was full, Jefferson was full. First Avenue was full for a block and a half. Washington was full with the exception of two spots. The parking lot that is owned by Little Pub was filled. The parking lot that was owned by Riley's was filled. Neither Riley's was closed on the inside. Little Pub was not filled on the outside. And just wondering, with a 29-room hotel going in, how additional restaurant patrons are going to park in an area that's already filled? What's that?
Go to me.
There's an access code 322. 42240.
Even there. They have a password.
Someone is online who's talking, but they're not on subject.
You may want to ask everybody else to mute their microphones, so only the person who's speaking can talk.
Are we waiting for another speaker?
We would like to speak, but we can't get in.
Can you hear us?
We hear you.
Okay, all right. My name is... Yep. My name is Samuel Alagno. I live at 3 Jefferson Street. We are at the very end of Jefferson Street by the Seawall. We have experienced a tremendous increase in activity on the Seawall. And are, first of all, in total agreement with what David Driscoll has said, with what Gary Nelson has said, and what Joseph Satin has said. We feel that if additional commercial development is made in this area, the area cannot support the traffic nor the parking. It's become a safety hazard, both from traffic issues and public health and safety. The COVID situation now here is incredibly dangerous, especially on the weekends. And we just want to say that we are not in support of that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Was there anybody else? If not, I think we are going to close the public input session. And if I could just make a comment that I appreciate all the people who came tonight speaking. You have a right to protect your neighborhood and I think we will close. Do we need to vote to close the public input? No?
This is not a public hearing and I just want to state for the record to everybody who participated in the public input session today that pretty soon, starting, you know, in summer next year or maybe fall, we will be updating the plan of conservation and development again as a planning commission. And that's when, you know, any input on land use or future land use would be more valuable. And I encourage everybody who participated in the meeting today to actually participate in the P O C D update process.
And if I could just add to what Susmita said as the chair. Also, I'm very happy that you're coming this early in the process. Normally, people don't come to planning, they come to zoning. And I hope you will all realize, if you stick around, that we have a very small scope of what we're voting on here. We are not voting on traffic, we are not voting even on how much operational systems there are in the ground. We are voting specifically on a zone change from residential back to WP. That's the limitation that we have been asked, that we're allowed to vote on right now. This will then, after it leaves us, will go to zoning and which they will see the traffic studies and the building and the amount of parking on-site and how they will handle excess parking and all of that. Then that will come back to us if there are any categories that we need to input. For instance, if we feel that there are necessary road improvements, entrances and exits from the property, those kinds of things. Are they meeting the FEMA laws? Are they meeting? All of those things will now, after tonight, will start becoming a part of their proposal.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Mr. Chairman?
Excuse me, this is Gary Nelson. Can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
And I understand the scope of your committee and I think you explained it very well. But I would just ask that as part of your taking forward to, I guess, planning and zoning, that you also communicate to them that not only did four community members call in and the letter from Henry representing, I think, at least 130 Stratford residents and to be quite frank, the four of us that called in, I think, represent a number of people. We can just communicate forward, in addition to that, you know, that there is a strong public feelings about this proposal.
David, am I speaking with David Driscoll?
No, this is Gary Nelson.
Okay, Gary?
Yes.
For you and everybody who's there tonight, let me explain what I'm going to do is, I'm going to see if I can get a letter of intent from the committee as a whole, that I will then deliver in person to zoning and let them know exactly what you were talking about. Saying that before they agree with this, I will take that there because we need you to be a part of the process if we're going to end up doing things better. We are limited to this, what we can do, but I guarantee you that I will take that because personally, I've been in your situation. So I don't want you to feel like nothing is happening at all. We are limited as to what we can do.
That's much appreciated. Yeah.
Yeah, guys, we cannot have a long roundtable of discussion here because we've already gone 38 minutes. William, yes?
There's something happened with the sound. I don't know if Susmita froze, but the sound changed. The sound...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, this is William Chiranzelli. May I speak for just a brief moment?
We gotta...
You haven't spoken yet.
We have to shut this down.
I think, William, there's an internet connectivity problem with you. We all can hear and see each other.
No, my system is good. I'm clear.
William, everybody's been clear since the beginning on my end.
What I'm saying is, we have to cap this. We said three minutes. We got to cap this.
Well, we said three minutes per person.
Right, we're already at a half hour, so something...
Well, no, that's about right. We are really about right. There's a connectivity problem. I don't want to take all that time because we still have a good hour's work to do. So I'm going to close public input. If anybody wants to send, Susmita, an email or a letter to summarize your comments, please do and that will go into our record. The recording is also there online if anybody wants to look at it further. So given that...
Is there any reason William can't speak?
Why can't Mr. Chiranzelli speak?
Because...
Why are you limiting him? He has three minutes.
Go.
There's only been four people that have spoke. I shouldn't, Mr. Chiranzelli not speak.
Go.
Go ahead, he's free to speak. Go ahead.
May I speak, sir?
Yes.
Okay, my name is William Chiranzelli. I live at 88 First Avenue. We're on a threshold right now, right with planning and zoning, that's vitally important. If the residential zone that is before you today, represented by Platypus, goes forward to WF, there is statutory requirements from the town presently that WF permits, even though you don't have a plan in front of you, a restaurant to be built there. That restaurant, if it is part of the plan, can then be open until at least 1:00 a.m. There is no parking today. And if you transfer from residential, which did not have requirements on the Seawall, if you go to a commercial zone with WF, immediately by Stratford ordinance, it permits any adjacent property owner to have parking at the wall until that restaurant closes, which by statute and liquor commission could be very easily 1:00 a.m. I have nothing else to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now we have closed public input. Now we're going to move on to the actual referrals back to our administrative agenda. Yes? So, Susmita, can you turn off the other people and just have us? Thank you. And again, thank you to everybody who came tonight. So our first is the zoning referral, 460 Beach Drive and 24 Washington Parkway, Platypus Partners LLC seeking a site plan review and change of zone from an RS4 to a WF zone. Susmita, I need a correction here. You also have this for a under-camera view. We are not doing that tonight, though, correct?
Well, we don't have to discuss that or vote on that. It was, the application was put for both, but there is no development happening right now. It's just a zone change. So you could just, you know, discuss the zone referral.
But we could discuss the FEMA elevations requirement for that as part of this. So let's try then...
But there is no reason, no need to vote on that. You don't have to vote on the campsite plan.
But that's where we are indication of making sure environmentally that this is, everything is covered. We could add that into this as one document to them.
Yes.
I just don't want them to say that we completed a camera view.
Yeah, I mean, it was an honest mistake on our part to, usually campsite plan reviews go to any one of the commissions and this has already been added to the zoning commission, so we didn't have to include it on the agenda here. So if you wanted to just waive the rules for this and go with the zone change only, that should be okay.
I'll make that motion.
Anybody second it? If we do this, we are narrowing our ability to make any comments. Well, I... We are narrowing our ability right now to put into the record any comments about coastal management.
You could still address it in your letter, like a recommendation.
Okay.
Because it relates to land use.
I'm going to look to see, Sandra made a motion to eliminate it from our agenda. Anybody second that?
Just to be clear, we're seconding your motion to eliminate, to postpone it and just eliminate it from this agenda?
Well, that would not come in, it doesn't come into play until there is a site plan.
Okay.
And we're actually, we're being asked to make a review of something that we don't have a site plan for.
Are we still in discussion? My motion is to eliminate from tonight's agenda.
Right.
Okay.
Anybody second?
I'll second, but clarification, do we want to table it or do we want to?
Well, we just have to eliminate it from the agenda because even if it were to come before the commissions, it only comes before the planning commission if the zoning commission is not meeting or if there is something that truly falls along the line of planning commissions per view. Otherwise, it typically goes with a development review and with the zoning commission.
So in Zone 4, I will second Sandra's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So unanimous? Okay, then now let's go back to the zoning. Before we start, let me just make a comment because it's been mentioned by several people here and those of you who are new on planning might not know. In 2017, we... In twenty seventeen, we, I was still an alternate at that point, but we, planning, uh, did a, had a proposal before us, which they asked to change the zoning from waterfront to, uh, residential. And at the time, we discussed the fact that it was not consistent with the P O C D. But also at the time, we had no real commercial activity taking place down there because of the economics at the time. But we ended up working very hard to subdivide the prop, the property, to subdivide those properties so that they could get in the three houses that were, that were going to be built on it. But it's three years later. It's three years later and that company is now gone. So all of the requirements that we put through on that piece of property essentially are gone. Uh, we're now looking at a new company and a new sense of property requirements that will have to play out, but I think the, a strong case can be made. My assumption is that when it goes before the waterfront commission, they will make these requirements that it meet our current standards of fourteen feet, that it be on stilts, that there be a, uh, redress of the utilities that are in that area, because it's in a flood zone. And it's gonna continue to be in a flood zone. So, uh, whoever builds there is gonna have to be very sensitive to that, and there are requirements that come with that. The third inst, the other third that I wanna get, I wanna say right now, just to get it on the record is we worked very closely with that developer to make sure that as long as I've been in town and as long as I've seen any records, we have always had a greenway running down Shore Drive, I believe it's Shore, right? I mean, Beach Drive, uh, up Washington Avenue, and it actually goes up, um, it goes up Jefferson. And we worked very closely with that developer to say that if we were to give permission, what we wanted to make sure that we, uh, we kept is our right to put the greenway in the, um, right-of-way on their property going around the corner, essentially where Riley's is now, up a block up Washington, so that we would eliminate one of the bottlenecks where it's really dangerous for bicyclists. Uh, I wa, I really, I, that's one of the reasons that I, I would go before town council, I mean, before zoning and make that point and ask them to go back and reference that material and bring that same, uh, material to the current developers, that if we move forward, whether it's commercial or residential, that this plan stay in effect, because that's been our, in our P O C D on multiple pages for as long as we've had a P O C D. Uh, I'm gonna open this up for questions from people now. Yes, Christina?
Uh, Christina Kazanis, uh, zone one. Um, so I'm gonna ask a, uh, probably a newbie question, um, just for clarification. Is it normal or is it common practice for a developer to ask for a zoning change to a property without having presented a plan for the use of that property?
I can answer that for you. Yes, it, that is within their rights.
I didn't ask if it was within their rights. I have asked if it's been done before. Is that common practice?
Uh, yes, because developers often buy land and rezone it so that they can resell it. And that happens all the time, not just in Stratford, but everywhere. Yes, William?
My question is, um, I believe you said earlier, I wanted to make sure you were correct. Three years ago, you wanted to go from a waterfront to a residential, or did you say that in reverse?
No, we went from waterfront to residential.
Okay, so now with that being said, my question is, from going from RS four to waterfront, what, I, I read on here what that provides them, but does that mean there's a boat slip? They can sail up and walk across the beach to the restaurant? What? Tell me, what else does waterfront mean?
Uh, well, it specifically in this instance, waterfront means a commercial, a commercial development that is waterfront oriented. So you couldn't put like a dollar store there. You have to put something in that relates to the waterfront, because we are, uh, our po, our P O C D is very clear that Stratford needs to increase their access to the waterfront and also our uses of the waterfront, because that is part of building a consumer tourist destination. Uh, I mean, it's, it's on our starred map as a tourist destination, but we're down to two restaurants in that area.
Okay, so my question is different, is how would that change the topography there? What, what would it do different than what it's, uh, zoned for now? That the residents may be not happy with?
In both, in both instances, it's going to make the same requirements in terms of environment. There's both instances, they're going to have to elevate the land to above fourteen feet. Uh, they're going to have to create pervious paving, meaning that the water could quickly go through it. Uh, they're going to have to, um, build in such a manner that it is, because it's right on the, it's right on the ocean, uh, on the sound, they're gonna have to build hurricane-proof buildings. So those three things apply whether it's residential or, uh, commercial. What it, could, what it will change, and that eventually will come back to us, I believe, is it go, the, a matter of parking. When it was residential, we had gravel driveways for each of the three houses that allowed two cars per house. If you're gonna put a, you're gonna put any kind of a commercial restaurant, assuming that that's what's going in here, since we already have record of a beer garden or whatever it is, then, uh, our Stratford parking requirements come into play. Now, everybody here recognizes that we, we revised our parking townwide this year. So there is some thought that's gonna have to be, what actually does that mean in this, in this situation? Uh, could, because I don't think, you couldn't get more than forty cars parking on that piece of land if you built something on it. I, I'm, that's just a quick guess and do not hold me to it, but, uh, you then need to take all three restaurants that are there and find out what their total capacity is and say, if you could only put forty-six or seventy-six on the seawall, then where is, where are the other cars gonna park? And that's where the people in the neighborhood have a right to ask that question of us. Yes, William?
Okay, I guess my question still stands is exactly why are they trying to go from residential to waterfront? What is the advantage for them and what is the disadvantage for the?
The advantage was that no one wanted to buy five hundred thousand dollar houses on stilts in that location. So the developer that bought the land prior is giving up on it. And now someone came along and said, how can I use this land? I, I think it's as simple as that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Daniel?
No, I think you explained it well, and I think, you know, I was involved with that, with that also, so, um,
Did I, was I accurate, do you think?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely. And I think, you know, obviously the concerns of the public, um, are concerns of ours. And anybody that's been down to the seawall lately, uh, can see some of the, uh, traffic issues that running into, and I, I would like to also know, um, as far as, uh, the police are concerned. And, um, you know, how many times they've been called down there to take care of some of the, uh, the parking issues and some of the complaints that are going on? So I think all that information would be relative to us making some decisions.
Well, we have to, we, the only thing we're making a decision on tonight is, are we going to change this from one zoning to the next? What I think we have to also do is say, how, how do, what do we want? What information do we want to deliver to zoning? What do we wanna say that we are doing this for you, but we'll only be happy if you also consider this information? They don't have to, but if we were to give them a, a unanimous vote, it makes it harder for them not to pay attention to it. Yes, Sandra? Your, your mic is on.
Are we required to vote tonight? Does it have to go to zoning now, or I feel like there's just a lot of information missing?
Has to go to zoning. The, the rules are that if we get a, if we get in a cam or a zoning change, uh, we have thirty-five days in which to respond. And if we don't respond, that's the same as saying we're in, we're in agreement. So if we refuse to vote, or if we vote for more time, um, then essentially it's the same as voting.
I'm sensitive to the fact that, uh, Mr. Abansky noted that it is consistent with our town plan, but, but the parking, the safety, the concerns of the citizens are, are, are really at the top of my mind right now.
But as planners, I mean, as the planning committee, we are essentially required to pull out what it is legally we're asked to be voting on. I know, listen, I feel the same way.
Yeah, I know.
Believe me, because I'd rather be standing down, marching with the protesters, but as a planning committee, we have to say yea or nay to whether we leave it as residential or we accept their request and change it to, uh, coastal, uh, commercial. Yes, Dan?
So don't we usually get some feedback from, uh, the police on this and the, from fire? Uh, you know, I see the, the recommendation from Jay on here, but, um, normally I think we would get additional information from all those involved.
Daniel, I agree with you absolutely. Yes, Sismita?
I just wanna respond to Commissioner Sam's question. Uh, usually, uh, fire and police respond back when there's a development review before zoning. This is just a zone change, and zone change is, uh, relative mostly to the land use, and, um, that's why you don't have comments from other departments. And if you feel, I mean, if, if you feel like it's not the correct land use for this, I, I mean, your P O C D has to be amended to reflect that, that, you know, you don't wanna see any more waterfront commercial moving forward because of the concerns that you have. And that's a path that you can undertake. Uh, but if the P O C D has, uh, if you look at the document, it does talk about infrastructure, um, but the infrastructure that it refers to is mostly with respect to public sewer, public water, and enough transportation infrastructure, like having the right-of-way sidewalks. And, you know, all these are already in place in the location that you're looking at. So, um, if you were to look at a development, then definitely the other impacts that you're considering would come into play. But if you're just looking from a zoning standpoint, do you want to encourage waterfront commercial in these locations or not? That's the question when it comes to zone change.
Yes, William?
Okay, so again, my question is, right now, forty and sixty Beach Drive, essentially right now, those are parking lots. Am I correct?
Yes.
So with the zone.
Yeah, as is the other, uh.
Your weekend.
Parkway.
What?
It's three separate lots.
Okay, so twenty-four, um, Washington, forty and sixty Beach are all essentially parking lots?
Yes.
Okay, so with this zone change, they're looking to develop forty and sixty Beach, and I guess to the, the concerns of the neighborhood is if they build something there, you lose those parking spaces, so now they would have to use the seawall parking in lieu of the area that's parking now. Is that what I'm understanding?
No, because currently the, the only parking that, if they're using it as parking right now, it's through a building permit that we don't know anything about, but the, in twenty seventeen, it was determined that all of the parking lots there were not usable.
Not usable in what way? What, what do you mean not usable?
That they were so deteriorated that they were not parking lots any longer.
Okay, so I'm sorry, if I'm not understanding, I'm trying to understand what will that land be used for? So I guess if the issue is, is traffic, lack of parking, late night noise and out-of-town residents, if you're gonna develop forty and sixty Beach to a building that's, you know, flood-sensitive on stilts, it's an eyesore, but where are those people after you develop that area? Where are they going to park? Are the residents saying they're going to take over the already limited parking that's there? Is that the concern? I'm trying to find out.
I would think, I, I, I can't speak for them, but I would think that that's really what they're, the, they didn't seem, they objected to the noise and, and the commerce of a restaurant. Um, but they also seem to be objecting primarily to the additional traffic and the parking, which causes, uh, more disruption. I, 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 my honest feeling is that the traffic is not as big a problem if it flowed evenly, but when you get people parking in and out of parking spaces, that totally disrupts the traffic flow. So it's one in the, and the same. And COVID has made this an ugly mess because there are people that are wanting any little view of the ocean. Um, and that's the only view that they can get for free in Stratford.
And, um, if I may add, um, Commissioner Watson, hypothetically speaking, it could also mean that probably if there is no development planned, and if they're just trying to social distance their existing restaurant space to utilize a temporary space.
No.
That could be too. I mean, I, I don't know. It could be no development. It could just mean that they're preparing for something in the future to sell. It could also mean that they're probably, you know, land banked. Could be many reasons. So zone change and development review are two separate things. So you're looking at the zone change with respect to the land use, and if the land use is, um, suitable for that allocation or not, that's all. If the commercial waterfront land use makes sense there or not.
So I go back.
It could just mean that they would just change the zone and keep it like that for like next five years too. You never know.
If, if I were to step back and say that if we look at the P O C D in the biggest, broadest sense, if we say that Stratford has recognized that we underutilized our waterfront with industrial companies for decades, and part of us reinventing ourselves is to find new uses of our waterfront that allows the average public to access them without them being all private, then I could ask the question, uh, uh, is this appropriate to that broad goal of Stratford? Yes, William?
I think they're asking us too much in a short amount of time to say yea or nay. There's too much going on here.
They're not asking us, remember, William, there is no proposal here. All they're asking is.
Well, we have to legislate something tonight.
Yeah, what?
That's what I'm saying. We have to say something tonight, yea or nay, but we don't have enough information to say yea or nay. I don't know. I mean, COVID is a temporary situation. After October, no one's eating out in the parking lot anyway. It's gonna be too cold, so you can't use the COVID as a long-term excuse. That's the temporary thing. So what I'm saying is I don't have enough information to say yea or nay, because I don't know what they're doing.
Well, all you're being asked is to make the decision of, would you rather see a, a commercial restaurant there or a commercial enterprise, or would you rather see three private homes?
Right.
Because that's the only choice that we have to vote on tonight. Yes?
Own that forty-sixty lot.
All three lots.
Own all three lots. That's a restaurant there now, if I'm not mistaken, so you're.
No, that's Skipper's. This is the land, this is the land to the, to the other side of Skipper's.
So they own the restaurant and bought the land?
I don't know if it's the same company. Yes?
I think there is.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Christina?
I, with all due respect to the chair's interpretation of what we're being asked to do, what we're being asked to do, um, opens up, us, it opens up a pathway that I'm not entirely comfortable with without more information about. without more information about what is going to be done on this property. And I think, given the sensitive nature and location of this property, necessitates us to have more information from the developer about what they want to do with it before we start rubber-stamping a zone change that opens up a pathway to a use that is not in keeping with what residents are... With all the concerns that the residents and speakers have brought up today and that have been talking to me about, and that we just know from being residents of Stratford. You know, if anything, this zoning change request has the potential to, really, to prevent access to open space. If that road and that parking is now going to be met with competing interests for restaurant use, we're basically paving the way for a contradiction within the P O C D of waterfront use for commercial purposes and access to open space. And I, you know, without having, I heard what you said and about what it is that we're being asked to do and that it's common practice for these zoning changes to be requested before there's actually a plan in place. But I am afraid of, that what we're being asked to do paves the way towards a result that is not in keeping with the P O C D and is clearly not in keeping with what the residents around there have been articulating. So I know that we can't punt this to a later date. But I, I, I don't know.
We have to give a legal response to why we do not want to, why we do not want to say yes to their request. Yes, Dan?
I think Sussmita mentioned it before. There's many hypotheticals of the use of the property that could be utilized. So based on that, you know, we're sort of grasping at straws right now on what exactly is going to be done with the property. So, thanks, Sussmita.
Yes, Sussmita?
I also want to let you know that all these hypotheticals have been readied out in the P O C D process before the P O C D identified it as a future land use and then adopted it. So this was all part of a larger community discussion.
Sussmita, we lost you.
They had several workshops, and I'm sure Commissioner Watson was part of those too. So if your P O C D is guiding it, it was based on some level. So I'm not going to say that, you know, you should just base it on hypotheticals here. You have to consider your P O C D because legally, your opinion, if you are deflecting away from P O C D, you have to give your reason for voting tonight on why you're deflecting away from your P O C D.
So you could bring up, you could vote that there are safety issues. That would be a legitimate planning reason for voting. Yes, Sandra?
Due to safety and traffic issues brought up tonight, I make a motion that we forward this to the zoning commission with an unfavorable recommendation.
Okay, now, how do we handle this? Let's see. Sussmita, do I just put this to a vote? Or do I ask if anybody has a separate...
You have to make a vote, make a vote on your recommendation.
Okay.
Someone has to second it. I'll second it.
Okay, so then we're ready to vote? Do we need to discuss this any, the specific?
You just stated the reason. If you would like to restate the reason, you could state the reason.
The reason is because of safety and traffic issues. It's a very condensed area and traffic and parking is limited right now. And though our P O C D wants waterfront use in that area, I think it would be more likely to restrict waterfront use for the general population if we put more development in there.
Okay, everybody agree with that?
Yes.
We're ready to vote? William, did you want to comment?
No, no, I'm sorry. I was saying I agree.
Okay, guys, this is when it's hard. This is when it gets tough in planning. All right, everybody, do we want to do an individual vote? Or can we just?
Yes.
Say aye?
Aye. Aye. Or an unfavorable vote, aye, right?
We're accepting Sandra's, we're accepting Sandra's response. And that was unanimous?
Yes.
Okay, now, let me go one step further then. Do we want to put together a letter that gives the conscious of the planning board that explains why?
I think that'd be great. Yes.
And if we can do that also unanimously, then we have some weight with zoning that they then could say, let's refer this back to planning once a proposal comes through. But here's the rub. If we're saying no to a zoning change, they're not going to do a zoning change for a restaurant. I mean, they're not going to do a plan for a restaurant. Unless they decide, unless they, because the zoning change has not gone through. So discussion ends.
Unless zoning votes to override our recommendation, right?
Which, Sussmita, they can do, correct?
They do, of course. Planning is just advisory, so zoning commission can override. If they find legitimate reasons.
They need to have a majority, a supermajority though. So they need to then have four votes to override us. I do believe, I could be wrong, but I think that's the case, that they would have to run into the same kind of situation to come to some kind of consensus.
I mean, we have our unfavorable recommendation, and it's on zoning to figure out their stuff right now. But I think...
Really, though, we still want to try to find a solution for the person who now owns the land.
Well, that's my question, Harold.
Otherwise, we're setting ourselves up for a lawsuit.
William Boyd's on to, my point is, if we deny them now, what's the waiting period where they can resubmit for the same thing? Is there a 60, 90 day? Because they can come back and...
Well, first of all, it has to go through the zoning commission process. And only after that, we can make a determination on when exactly they can reapply. I think they can apply back in, after, I don't know, after two years. I have to be, you know, I just have to find out, or maybe after one year. I have to find out from Jay and others about the timelines. But I'm also thinking that it is more under the purview of zoning commission right now on what they decide to do.
Okay. So if I understand you correctly, if we say no now, this zone change that we received...
Just did say no.
No, I'm saying, okay, I understand that. But they can't resubmit this for another two years?
I don't know if it's two years, to be honest. I don't remember off the top of my head. I have to check the statutes and then come back to you with a timeframe on that. I also think, you know, you would be questioned legally because you, the same document that you use as a guide, you're actually, you know, going with your own document and saying, giving a different recommendation. Of course, I hear that your reasons were safety and traffic. But if the zoning commission were to reconsider it, I don't know how they would reconsider it.
Okay. The question I still have open is, because it went from seafront zoning to residential and essentially is being asked to return back. So essentially, we have a conforming to our P O C D, non-conforming to our P O C D. And then they were asking us to essentially create a conforming. I think that is where we as planning are at our weakest. But it is what it is. I think that we're now asking zoning and the owners to go back and think about something that will not create as much havoc to the residential neighborhood. So I think we should say, that's our decision. And the only thing I would suggest is, if there's anybody here who would be interested in putting together a letter that we or I can take to zoning to help explain this, I would greatly appreciate it. Christina? Well, Christina and William, if you want to get together...
I was thinking Christina.
Oh, okay.
Christina.
So we can make a vote on that? Or we can just, we can just say Christina will compose the letter? And I will deliver it?
Can I just get clarification on when this letter is needed by? And the process that we want to use to approve the content of the letter?
What, I don't know when zoning's next meeting is. I know that I believe our August meeting is not... Are we having an August meeting, Sussmita?
Yes, we have a subdivision application that just came through.
And is zoning having a meeting this month or?
They're having it tomorrow.
So I don't know that we, well, they will be looking at this tomorrow. So start writing.
I can't write a letter for tomorrow. I wasn't prepared to pull an all-nighter.
Listen, if worse comes to worse, I could just go on and ask to speak tomorrow. If, Sussmita, if you will send me the link, I'll go in, I'll do a simplified version and say, this is the way we felt. We're not, it's not that we don't want to see anything happen there. We just want to make sure that, before we say yes, that we get some kind of assurance that it's suitable for that, for the local residents.
But Harold, my motion really didn't consider the local residents, and I don't think we should comment on that. I considered safety, parking, and the access to the waterfront. Our P O C D wants to increase access to the waterfront. And I think this would limit access because of the restricted parking. So our residents and out-of-towners that want to come look at the seawall, where are they going to go? I think that's a very valid issue. So it wouldn't increase, according to our plan, it wouldn't increase access to the waterfront. I believe that it would decrease access to the waterfront. I think that's the main point I was trying to make.
The dynamics, I was just going to say, the dynamics have changed since three years ago, as you alluded to before. So the use of that area now is really a lot, a lot stronger than it was in years past where...
Oh, absolutely. I agree. We only had one half-functioning restaurant at the time. And everybody thought that there would never be anything else down there.
Right.
As a general rule, I think the commission has to reconsider the land uses by the waterfront because there is a threat to you as a commission if you do not keep your plan current and if you do not make your, base your decisions on the plan. Because then you, you know, any future applications that come in could arguably say, state the same reasons that you've been hearing tonight. And it would be hard for you to make a decision if you're not, if you're moving away from your P O C D. So I suggest to this commission to have some meaningful conversations around, you know, what should generally happen in this area? And how can it inform our next P O C D?
May I make a follow-up to what you just said? Because I think that what we really have to do, and I know that it's not necessarily following along with our reduction of demand for parking spaces. But in this instance, because it's an overused area that what we really should think about is that any new commercial development that's taking place down there must have the ability to park their customers on their land. Now, in this instance, it might mean that some of these places are going to have to buy someone's house to create another parking lot. But that might be a way to solve this problem. Happens in other towns all the time. That if you want to have a restaurant for 40 people, then you need to have 20 parking spots. It's, Sussmita will not agree with that because that's not modern-day planning. But in this instance, it would make some kind of sense because of the special conditions down there. No one's...
And I got point of order. Should we still be discussing this once we voted on it? It should be over, right?
I guess you're right.
I'm in favor of that, I'll tell you.
This is not over, though, but all right. All right, so let's move on to the next item then. We have no CAM site plan review because we got rid of it. We have a lease with Crown, under a 24 review. We have a lease with Crown Castle Towers 062 LLC for the construction of a monopole cell tower on town property located on Hickory Woods Lane. Now, I went online and looked at the Google map after, to see where it really is. And to the best of my knowledge, I think that it falls, maybe you could answer this, Sussmita, it falls contiguous to the electrical transmission towers.
Yes.
So while we are looking at a piece of land that is, has definite wildlife resource protection needs, we're also looking at a piece of land that currently is right next to where we have a 300-feet transmission tower. So while, in general, my personal feeling is, I don't like towers, I don't like the poles in anyone's town. They're distracting and they destroy any sense of colonial when they stick up on the horizon. But in this instance, it's right next to, it would not be taller than the transmission towers. So it would not be as objectionable. I'm telling you my opinion. What I could tell is, they don't want the whole 16-acre parcel. And if we make sure that they say that, then we should be okay. Before I get ahead, let me let Sussmita introduce this piece.
Yes, so like I said in my staff report, this is a parcel that has a lot of wetlands on it. And I think there appears to be some steep slopes too. It is undevocable because of its existing constraints. Conservation superintendent mentioned that there's a box turtle, which is an endangered species that is present on this site. And they have an interest in deeding this property as open space for the future. And it's also one of the open space conservation goals of the town to, you know, expand open space network where feasible. And they were, the P O C D did identify Greenway Network expansion through the parcel. But I think realistically speaking, there's so many wetlands that any development that has to happen would have to go through a big process. And I don't even know if that could ever be done through those wetlands and if that is the right route to undertake, considering that there are endangered species there. So this property, because they're proposing telecommunications facilities, every application for telecommunications facilities location goes before the Connecticut Siding Council. And they have a more stringent review on the environmental impacts. And there will be an opportunity for the public to participate as well, I hope. Because mostly, they, the large-scale applications, at least I've seen them having, holding public hearings and testimony posted on their website. So for this property, I think the cell phone tower location would not be that detrimental for now because it's just a small tower that's being located. And the good thing about this is that they're going to probably pave an access road to the tower, which could be in future, you know, if the town ever felt that endangered species can be contained and migrated to some other location carefully then. And if they really felt that they could expand the Greenway without touching the wetlands, then there was, you know, you have some sort of public access partially created to the site. And that's the advantage. But in general, the land use is residential, single-family's, open space zone. And that, ours one is the zone and the future line just proposed in P O C D is residential open space. And as I mentioned in the staff report, residential open space also recommends preserving some parcels for conservation. And this could be a lot of those parcels.
Yes, Dan?
So I've been up to that property a bunch of times. I go by there a lot. So there is a residential property directly in front of... So, I've been up to that property a bunch of times. I go by there a lot. So, um, there is a residential property directly in front of that area. So, and then you have the condominiums, which is Hickory Woods, I believe condominiums that are to the left side, if you're looking from the street side. So with the access, does it need to come in through U I? Uh, or the electrical lines? Is that where they're looking to put ac- an access road in? Because I don't think there's much, there's not a much.
There's not much room. Yeah. And I don't know honestly if they will do that, or they, they, I, when I went and visited the site, um, I have a picture in the staff report too, where you can see that, um, there's a blockage at the front. And somebody could have possibly gone to the site through that and, and without even having an access road there. So, um, the map that was provided, uh, by the applicant shows a rough approximate location of where the, um, tower would go. And, um, I think it all depends, once the lease is approved and the Connecticut Siting Council review is started, when they, uh, know for sure that, okay, they're gonna go on this site, that's when I think the plans will become more con- concrete on where the access road will go and how the Connecticut Siting Council will want them to handle this.
Yeah, I would just be concerned.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just, I was just concerned because that residence, they just moved in from outside the area. They've done a great job with landscaping and everything else, and I hate to see a huge pole go directly behind his house. If they can move it back so it's out of the way and a little hidden, you know, I think, you know, you wouldn't get, get much objection from them, but. Um, and then there's a cell tower right across the street, right on the, uh, utility poles. So, um, I'm just surprised they want to put in additional, uh, coverage, but.
I think, uh, based on what I heard, uh, they were hand, uh, having some issues with the cell phone tower right next, um, and I don't, uh, that's why they want to have their own location.
Okay.
I am interested, this is a sixteen-acre part of our Greenland inventory for the town. So I, I'm, want to make sure that we are not, that we are not, uh, leasing the sixteen-acre wetland to them. I, I think we need to have you be very, uh, clear that we are giving them a twenty-by-twenty piece of acreage that covers their pole and access to a, a roadway that they put in. I, I think that, uh, I know that communications companies, once they, they're kind of like the utility companies in terms of tree cutting and everything else, that unless we spell it out to them in, in what we're offering them, they could take a feeling of ownership of this parcel, and I don't think we, I think we should be very mindful that. I don't see that in, in this proposal that I'm reading right now.
Harold?
Yes, William.
What is the address on this again?
There is no address.
There's a parcel ID.
I'm sorry?
There's a parcel ID. It doesn't have a specific address on it.
It's directly across, it's directly across, uh, from the baseball field, that flood. So it's the, the, it's the field that's closest to the road. And it's just when you get to the top of Chapel Hill, Chapel Street. It's on the right-hand side.
So the road, the main entrance road would probably be through Chapel Street?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
So is it right before Paul follows the flood ball field? It would come in through there, so that's the only place that I saw that it looked like it would be doable.
So it's before Pumpkin Ground broke?
Yes.
Okay.
It's right behind, uh, the Hickory Woods condominiums. You can actually, from the parking lot, you can see, um, the wooded area.
That's where they just had a bear sighting a couple of weeks ago.
Maybe they had a scratching post.
Hickory Woods condominium. Sorry.
So anybody else? Sandra, any comments?
No, as long as they don't get rid of our turtles.
Okay, Christina?
I just wanna, actually, can I say something real quick? Um, back in twenty-twelve, um, the town applied for, and I can't remember if it got it or not, um, applied for, uh, open space and waterfront acquisition grant funding from deep for this property. Um, and all the stuff that we're talking about now with the need to protect the turtles and, and you make sure that, you know, we, we preserve open space and everything was, uh, cited in this commission, as well as inland wetlands and the Conservation Commission all, um, you know, gave support for that, uh, acquisition. So I, I, you know, it, it sounds like, it sounds like what they want to do will not disrupt the, the goals, uh, you know, the environmental protection goals. Um, but, yeah, I just, I just thought it was funny. Eight years later, here we are talking about the turtles.
And Kelly Carrigan, our conservation person, was pretty clear about that, Christina, that.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that, yeah.
But she wasn't totally negative about it going forward, but she just wanted the assurance. So maybe that's what part of this has to have, is that they have to do the environmental, uh, before, i- i- they, they have to assure us as part of any lease that they do the environmental work. The other thing that I thought about, Sussmita, because all of this stuff is becoming mini- miniaturized. I've been through pole fights before, and um, as Dan said, you can put it on toll telephone poles. It's just a lot more labor-intensive to hang them everywhere, but they're just as functional. So I think that if we're to do something like this, we also should have a provision in their contract that someone has to remove it. When this becomes old technology. Which I'm sure will be about the same time there's a, the seventeen-year lease or the twenty-year lease they're talking about. Yes, William.
Well, if they're in fact leasing it, then we would continue to bill them if in fact it was still there. So, but wouldn't that be reasonable?
Yes, except that, I, I don't, uh, the billing is, uh, pittance. We're, we're, we're not gonna get rich off what we make off.
And lastly, they might be, uh, they might be building five G towers, which are being, uh, there's a proliferation of five G towers, which are different than just hanging on a telephone pole. So we, we're not privy to what they're actually building, but in fact, if they're building a pole. And lastly, if they're building something where there are transmission lines already, I don't see where there's a issue with conservation because you already have existing stanchions there already. I would say the, the access road is, that there'd be a consideration for that, so there's no uh, impediment to turtles or whatever traversing that. But outside of that, it's already wetlands. I don't understand why one pole could really be an issue.
Well, also, listen, I, I know that the, the document kind of downplays, uh, the greenway, but it, that area is on our greenway list. Because ideally, we want to try to get the greenway off River Road and in somewhere in the middle there. Granted, we cannot afford to pave a, or even gravel that far, all the way down to Mill, Mill, uh, Pond, but, I mean, Peck's Pond. But there is area that, that's a right-of-way that we could theoretically get. It's, other towns have gotten that right-of-way. So we shouldn't quickly give up. I mean, we should make also clear that we want the rights to use this roadway. Um, because these companies can become very proprietary after you sign the deal. So I think we need to move forward. If no one else has any comments, Daniel, this is in your neighborhood, right?
Yep.
So you're the one who, um, you want to set us off on a, the other, or?
The motion to approve the eight twenty-four?
And do we want to put any, anything added to the back?
I don't know, but, you know, I'm just looking at the access. So the access would have to come in through where the present utility is. So there is, there are two gates on each side of Chapel Street, one for the north side and one for the south side. So if they could access through the utility, that would make more sense, but I don't, public access, you know, I don't think there's any room for public access to get back there, because you'd have to go through the condo, or you'd have to go through that residential piece of property.
So, could we make it simple and say that any access road town will have the right to use?
Town will have the right to use the utility, uh, and I wouldn't even call it a driveway, it's just an access point.
That's what I was saying, and that, that's why I said access road, because it's never gonna be a curbed cutout, and that they will also, uh, faithfully deal with the environmental with.
And listen, I think they would have to get permission from the utility, so also in order to access that area.
Oh.
Now, can I make a friendly amendment that we make it subject to an environmental review by our conversate, conservation?
I think it already has been.
Yep.
Has it been, Christina?
Uh, I, you're asking me to go on the way-back machine, I don't know.
Sussmita?
I asked, uh, the Conservation Superintendent, and she said if you would like, she can put it on the agenda for the Conservation Commission to discuss. But, um, there will be a, a big process before the Connecticut Siting Council anyway, with, with respect to environmental impacts, and it's just, you know, it's more, um, it has more authority to actually make them mitigate. Uh, any review by the Conservation Commission may just be a cursory review because telecommunication facilities have certain rights, uh, that can override other concerns. Uh, but I think a, a decision by Connecticut Siting Council would be more, uh, fruitful in this situation.
And I will withdraw my friendly amendment.
I, 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 I'm gonna disagree with Sussmita. I think that I, I would love to see that amendment stay, because I think it has to wait with the Siting Committee. Because what she just said is they're very powerful, they could do whatever they want. That's my experience in New York with similar situation.
So I think I gotta restate this, right? This is a favorable recommendation at Town Council?
Yes.
Uh, to approve the eight twenty-four with, with Sandra's, uh, comments, and also with, uh, acceptable, uh, access through the, uh, utility right-of-way.
That sounds good to me. Anybody else?
But Harold, did we want to also subject it to your comment earlier that they don't get the whole sixteen acres, but just the amount of land that they actually need?
I, 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 I think that because what we're, the next thing we're gonna be doing in the fall is counting up our available buildable wetland areas or, you know, our buildable lands. So we don't want to lose fourteen acres of our, uh, open space, because we're short already as it is. So.
But do we know how much, how much, how do we know what they actually need? We don't. Because that would be ironed out through the work they need to do with the Siting Commission, right?
Yes.
The map shows an approximate size and location, the map that went with the application for you. The address shows the size and location.
Okay.
But we're talking about a trailer, a trailer, a, you know, ten-by-thirty trailer or a brick building, and a pad for a giant, you know, a ten-foot pole that goes up to the sky. So you're talking about a lot, and then the, the power that comes in there is gonna have to be on, either underground or on poles. And the communications, I assume, but at least the power.
Call the.
Okay, so what's the motion?
Well, Daniel, you had it.
Okay, it would be a favorable recommendation to the Town Council to move forward with eight twenty-four as it relates to the cell tower, uh, with access through the, uh, utility right-of-way. And also to include a, did we talk about the con- Conservation, uh, Commission?
Yes.
Also to include a review by the Conservation, uh, Commission.
And to separate out only that amount of parcel that's needed? Or something of that sort?
I think that, that's gonna have to be determined by the, uh.
Right.
Yeah, by the site.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we get a second?
Oh.
I'll second that.
Sorry, second. William?
Second.
Okay, aye.
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 Dan's aye. Christina?
Oh yeah, I said aye.
Sandra?
I said aye.
William?
Aye.
Okay, so we're unanimous again, Eileen? So now we can go on to the next section. Let's see. The next section we have is the Stratford Housing Partnership. And before we start, I just want to thank Sussmita for sending all of you guys copies of the most recent Housing Partnership handouts.
Thank you, Sussmita.
I hope you read through them, because we're really gonna be asked in September to start making real work adding to what they're doing, because that's gonna require zoning changes. So we're, we're the ones that are gonna be doing some of that. Um, Sussmita, I'm gonna turn this over to you.
Sure.
Is that, is that terrible? Were you not?
No, I, I'm actually looking at my material here. So, um, we had our second meeting of Housing Partnership on July second. Um, I think actually July eighth, and, uh, it was well-received. The consultant made a lot of progress, um, on the data inventory. So at this point, all he's trying to do is collect data on, um, housing situation in Stratford and the region. Um, our census data is almost ten years old, the hundred percent data. We do have some sample data from twenty-fifteen. Um, but I think the problem is that, um, the new census data will arrive like next April, so we don't have a more recent data, uh, that we can rely on, um, without the, uh, twenty-fifteen ACS, um, American Community Survey estimates. Having said that, um, he was also looking into data, uh, that was published by HUD, Housing and Urban Development, and other sources. And, um, our partnership members had some questions on data sources that they asked the consultant to clarify. They also asked the consultant to look at Stratford's income data more closely, because, uh, Stratford's income levels don't truly reflect metro areas in, income levels, which include, um, other towns and the, uh, neighboring counties, um, and yeah, and the towns of the neighboring region, not the counties. Uh, like Bridgeport and Shelton, um, I think the metro area also covers Trumbull, Fairfield, uh, not just the six towns in MetroCard, but some outside towns as well. So the consultant is looking to define um, income boundaries for Stratford and also to compare, um, truly compare Stratford with other towns that are like Stratford in, in nearby communities. Um, the next step would be for the, the consultant is going to have another meeting with Housing Partnership members um, next week, next Wednesday, where the membership ma- uh, members will be, um, the partnership members will be actually providing their feedback on what they've seen and read in these documents. And if they have any concerns, um, regarding what has been presented and what their overall concern is for housing in Stratford. Pretty soon, we will be also, uh, developing a public engagement strategy where, uh, we can include comments from residents and other boards and commissions. Harold Watson, who is our liaison to the Housing Partnership from the Planning Commission, has also expressed an interest to have a combined Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to discuss these data and, uh, to discuss concerns for housing in Stratford. And the consultant said. And the consultant said, um, he would definitely um, set aside some time to actually reach out to all the commissions and boards uh, relevant to land use and discuss this issue with all the members uh, in, involved in those commissions. So the major findings from data that we have seen is that in general, housing is um, naturally occurring affordable housing is more prevalent in Stratford. Like when you look at other communities. Um, I don't think there are not many communities nearby where you can have a home for a median sales price of two fifty K. But when you look at the map that is enclosed in this uh, package, there are more locations in the town where you can find reasonably affordable housing. So it all boils down to choices because the demographic is aging in Stratford. There are, the median age is around forty-four years. And there are significant uh, portion of population that is aging, but would like to age in place or would like to find other choices. Um, uh, because right now all you can find in the housing mix are three and um, three, two and three bedroom houses. Most of the times are not studios. So it's about providing those choices. Um, and giving preferences uh, that are reasonable enough for all age groups. And that was the conclusion that was drawn from the initial data inventory. But um, again, like I said, it alone doesn't count and he will reach out uh, to the public and to all the members of uh, land use boards and commissions to find out what you think are truly the concerns for housing in Stratford.
And then I'm just going to add to what Susmita said, that one of the things that stood out to me was that Stratford does have a huge number of affordable houses. But they're mainly affordable to younger families. So when you go into the two and three bedroom homes, we have houses that are in the two hundred thousand dollar range. So right now we know that those houses are selling like crazy to people that are moving from the Bronx. People that are moving from Manhattan. There's a huge market right now that's happening that what we're trying to say is how can we get those houses to be acceptable as part of an affordable housing inventory? Cause if you do that, then Stratford's poor record of only having six percent, I believe that's the number, Susmita, right? That's.
Six point three.
Yeah, it's like six point three. And the state law requires that we be up at ten if we, uh, or ten point something. Uh, in order for us to have our uh, our share of affordable housing, given our all of the stuff, which is a lot of people. We're talking about four thousand more people if we were to instantly land on that. Um, that's not outside of the realm of projected apartment build out in the, in the P O C D. But what is going to be hard is finding the land to build that many apartments in Stratford. So what we have to do is define not just, it's not just apartment housing that's going to save us from this. It's also programs that can be developed um, that does um, that turns some of our existing housing into even more affordable housing. I think will be part of what we'll end up with when we can actually get this straightened out. Yes, Susmita?
I also wanted to uh, clarify one thing. This plan is not just for looking into affordability count or, you know, looking at public subsidized housing alone. We, this plan is for all of housing in Stratford and looking at preferences for all age groups, all income types. Because like I said, uh, this could become an amendment to our P O C D. Um, uh, once we approve the plan. And um, it's, I think any problem should have a holistic solution and not targeted at one particular issue. Um, and most often we see the communities make that mistake of just trying to resolve one issue, but not looking at uh, the other related uh, competence of that issue. And that's why I think it is very important to emphasize that this is not just for public subsidized low income housing, which is generally called affordable housing, but it is also to promote uh, workforce housing, middle income housing and housing opportunities for people who are disabled, who want to age in place, for seniors, for all types of populations.
And currently there are twenty-six percent, and this is, these are not new statistics. But the twenty-six percent of Stratford's population works in the uh, medical service field and teaching. When you take those two groups together, or those three groups together, you have the largest uh, specialized workforce of anything else in Stratford. And probably around us, we have more of those people that live in this town that it's right on the edge of being affordable for a lot, a great deal of them. Yes, William?
Considering that with the population change and that it's the largest population of a group of workers in this town and growing, because it's more seniors, you need more healthcare workers. The question I have is we're redoing our P O C D. There's a large track of land on Lordship Boulevard. As you go past the shell and you're going north, there's a whole patch of land on the left that's undeveloped. Is that part of our P O C D or is that in our purview to develop that? Because that's land's not being used. You can put apartments there. The, the, the roadway, there's no traffic issue because the roadway is already wide enough. And there's a turnoff to ninety-five right there. Things like that are pretty clear. It uh, situations where we can make a dent and the operative word is dent. If you need four thousand, there's no way you're getting that in one uh, project. But we could start to make small dents in it with developing areas that are basically vacant and not being used.
Well, uh, the, if you look at our, if you look at our P O C D, the vision statements of Ford Lordship Boulevard, that's exactly what it is. It's a combination of commercial slash residential housing, four to five, four to five stories tall. And to create a whole boulevard there, uh, but it was done before we started learning as much as we know now about global warming. So whatever's done there is going to have to accommodate the fact that that's also largely flood zones. But the two can be accommodated.
Correct. Right across the street from where the Ramada Inn was, that they're building apartments now. So you're essentially building them across the street.
Yep.
On the other side of Lordship, because you're building it at the old Ramada Inn as we speak, correct?
Yes.
Oh, Tom Prose. Oh.
No, you are pros. You, you are pros.
Okay, so where they're building the Stratford apartments where the Ramada Inn used to be, right behind it, they're building more apartments adjacent to the dump. Literally across the street is vacant land. You, you, so it's already, you know, to me, that's a perfect situation because it's land that goes far back. So you can have a turnoff to have an access road back there to access it. I mean, I don't really see, and it's no, and it's in no one's backyard. So you're not going to get a pushback from anyone. It's already, you know, commercial, residential already. So to me, it's a perfect situ- situation considering what we're trying to do.
Yes.
You have to see who owns the property. And uh, if it's town owned, uh, then it's a different scenario. But if it's private owned, there's only so much the town can do. Uh, if it's, it's upon the private property owner whether they want to redevelop it or not. Uh, but this, this is very, you know, important information and that should be actually conveyed to the consultant when the consultant reaches out to you for feedback. I also encourage you to actually encourage your constituents to participate in the planning process. Like I said, um, planning commission has more uh, powers over the plans and encouraging public input into these plans. Uh, so that's a venue for people to, you know, voice their opinions.
Go back and look at the section. You'll find it in the P O C D, William, and see if it makes any better sense to you now.
Um, okay. Ain't that a hell of a B C?
Uh, Susmita, is that, you think that's enough for now on this? Or do you have something else to add?
I think that's it. I, I just have.
I just want to, I'm ordering this book for, oh, sorry, my video's flipped. But I'm ordering the Planning Commissioner's Guide for everyone. I'll have it by our next meeting. It's my gift.
Aw, thanks, Harold.
It is from the, and Susmita approved of this. It is from the uh, American Planning Association. Not totally up to date, but it really helps you to understand why there is a planning commission. And you as a commissioner, how you need to think about functioning, both in the big picture and how that impacts you in the specific details. So I'll have those for you guys. Um, I was going to say I'll give them to you at the next meeting, but I guess we're going to have to find some way of meeting.
We'll stop by your house and pick them up.
Yeah, you could do that. Yeah. Okay.
Or when they deliver.
I have a question. Why can't we meet at town hall?
They tried doing that this past week with town council and it was a disaster. So we are not going, we are not going live for the foreseeable future.
Yeah, but there's few of us. We can social distance and no one comes to our meetings.
I don't think they're gonna, I don't think they're gonna let just us. And I, quite honestly, I'm not ready to do that. And I know there are other, yes, Susmita?
Um, according to open meeting laws, there are some procedures to be followed when you're holding these meetings. And they have to be publicly accessible for public to come in and hear your conversation. And um, if there is a public hearing item, the way you uh, take in public input also matters. Um, what happened last time was that there were some residents who were willing to offer public input by phone. There were some residents who were coming and walking in person. So it just gets too confusing on how this whole thing gets handled. Because right now we are in front of the screens, but imagine you were sitting in the chambers and people are calling in. Now that phone has to be audible enough to be, you know, recorded as well. Um, and the other uh, thing is also meeting logistics. Who is going to watch the meeting room and make sure people are adequately social distancing? And, you know, see that the capacity is um, kept at a reasonable um, limit. So um, I think there are some procedural issues we have to iron out if we want to actually meet in person. I'm not saying that it's unsafe because we are all working there every day with masks. We walk with masks in the corridors and we social distance ourselves. We have Plexi uh, shields by the desks. And all, each council member will get there. I mean, each person sitting in that council uh, on the seats will have their own Plexi shield and everything. So it is very safe. It's just about how we can manage the open meeting loss procedures. Um, in light of how we are holding the meeting right now. Because some people are still wanting to offer input by phone and they cannot be discouraged.
Okay, thank you.
I, 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 I think we're almost done, but before we, we're down to members' comments, concerns. And I would like to raise one issue. One of the things that, um, when Pat was the chair, we discussed, but we never really got around to implementing was the actual changes to the P O C D. Um, law states that the P O C D is a legal document and it must be submitted to the, to the state. Uh, and we must follow it. But it also allows planning the singular ability to make changes in it. By simply voting on a change. So given tonight that we decided to leave the zoning as, as residential on the property down by the seawall. But our P O C D says that it is, um, that it is seaside commercial. Should we do a vote to change the P O C D? Yes, ma'am?
Um, you cannot change the P O C D like this. You have to have meaningful public input and um, base your decisions on technical expertise before you just go ahead and change your land use. So I request the commission to come up with a strategy to influence public input. And if the commission is willing to wait for another six months, we would be pretty close to hiring a consultant to actually uh, assist us in this process.
Susmita, I was told that was not the case, that we could simply change, make the change throughout every meeting, that we should be doing that. So we'll discuss that, we can discuss this later.
Because um, by state statute, uh, it has to follow some public hearing procedures as well. Uh, whenever you're amending a comprehensive plan, um, you have to hold a public hearing and then amend the document. And that's the protocol. Um, Chair, Chairman Watson, I also want, had one last item on the agenda under other items. Discussion of Planning Commission roles and responsibilities.
Oh, okay.
I brought this item onto this um, agenda because of concerns raised by Commissioner Sant regarding a proposal uh, that he felt Planning Commission should have been involved in reviewing it. And um, unfortunately, um, we cannot discuss as a group by email. Uh, we have to have these discussions um, as a meeting. And that's why I kept my comments um, as limited as possible by email and included it on the agenda here. So I shared um, a page on roles of um, Planning Commission in your package, uh, which pretty much summarizes everything you know, but I just want to reiterate that um, the Planning Commission can hold public hearings. Um, when it comes to subdivision reviews, when it comes to plans of conservation and development. And then the other stuff that Planning Commission does, like advising on zone changes, like we did today, is could be through public input, uh, but not a public hearing. And municipal improvements is also one other uh, topic where the Planning Commission reviews and offers its uh, expert opinion on.
I'm sorry, what was that? I didn't hear you.
Municipal improvements, eight dash twenty-four reviews on sale these of prop, uh, public town properties or acquisition. So um, the application that you were referring to on Santa School, um, that did not fall under any of these. Um, you know, eight dash twenty-four or subdivision review or zone change for it to be brought to the commission yet. I mean, it could have fallen under an eight dash twenty-four review had the development been approved and the town was willing to actually work out an agreement with the potential developer. When the R F P was advertised, I, I was told that there were several workshops, like two or three workshops that happened prior to advertising the R F P in two thousand seventeen. And after hearing public concerns and um, preferences on what should go on the site, the R F P was written based on that feedback that was received. And when they advertised for the R F P, uh, the first time around, only one applicant responded, like one interested developer responded. To be fair, uh, in the process, uh, they didn't want to just go ahead and award to that one preferred developer, but they wanted to open it up again so that more interested parties can be uh, participating in this process. So the next time around, there were three developers that participated in the process, of which uh, there was a selection committee that looked at these proposals, that interviewed these three teams, and then one team was selected. And the team that was selected, um, brought this financing plan. And the financing aspect is not a land use purview. That's why it did not come before the Planning Commission. It went before the um, redevelopment agency and the town council. Um, the deal did not go through, and but if it went, if it went through, it would have come back to the Planning Commission for an eight dash twenty-four review.
So, uh, if I could comment on that? So first of all, I apologize if, you know, through that email, if anybody thought I was being a little obnoxious with email, but.
No, not at all. None.
You know, when I read the paper that, that morning, I was, I was furious in the fact that this discussion was going on. And, you know, when we talk about things going on in this town and collaboration, you know, it seems like when we get these eight twenty fours, you know, we get those thrown in front of us a couple of days before. And you try to review it and you don't really get the full background of what is transpired throughout the town. And I think those workshop committees, it would have been important for us to know about those. I, I felt that then, you know, in the discussion in the paper, they talked about the P O C D, they talked about planning, all the things that really affect us. And I know it eventually comes to us, but if we had some. And I know it eventually comes to us, but if we had some insight going into that of what the town council felt, what these people during the workshop, the community felt about this project, it would give us a better understanding of how we should be voting. That's, that's all. And I think the thing that really is discouraging about this committee, and I don't mean the individuals on this committee, is the fact that we can send a favorable recommendation to zoning and zoning can basically say, hey, we don't necessarily agree with you guys, but we're going to pass the, you know, we're going to pass this anyway. The same thing with the, you know, with, with things that we discuss in it. Sometimes, and I've, I've been on a couple of votes already, where we voted with unfavorable recommendations going to zoning. And zoning basically will approve the project without coming back to us for any feedback. So to me, that's, that's very discouraging because it puts us in a, in a position where we have no, no juice, so to speak. So and that's why I was, I was really aggravated with that because I just felt that the town council with the financing, you know, if everything had been approved, we would have been looking at a town council that was in favor of this project with us really not having the full information on everything. And then if we disagreed with the town council and decided we were going to be unfavorable with a recommendation, we would have been overwritten by the, either the council or the zones. That's the only thing I have to say. So.
Dan, I appreciate everything you're saying and I feel I'm really in agreement with you. It's been one of my frustrations, even when I was back in the days of being in a, a, a associate or whatever they call it. I think part of, that's part of the struggle that we have to keep working on is we are the people who represent the P O C D. And my problem that I see all the time is that zoning doesn't always pay a lot of attention to the P O C D. They look on it as strictly a suggestion. You know, and it doesn't go into their, into their decision. There isn't any, any long term thinking about some of these issues. So what we need to do is reach out. We need to take assign some of our members to go and sit and be a voice at some of these other meetings, particularly when it comes to some of these community based meetings where there are committees. Where I'm sure they'd be happy to have us to hear about what we have to say. It's a matter of, it's a matter of finding the time to commit. Yes, William.
But to Dan's point, you know, I'm pretty connected into town. Half of these meetings, I don't know when they're occurring. And we seem to be an afterthought as opposed to a forethought. And it seems like we're, we're trying to play catch up, but in a situation like tonight, something's given to us and we must do something, but we never have the full scope of what it is we're talking about. We have pieces of it and we're regarded to legislate. And if we don't legislate according to the P O C D, then we can possibly be sued. It seems like we're not getting the full spectrum on things soon enough and broadly enough to say, to give qualified answers.
Well, here's the question. My response to that is Susmita and Jay, when they get these documents in, their, their timeline, their timeline starts immediately. Yep. So you can't like turn to our administration people and say, get us all this stuff sooner because oftentimes it doesn't exist. And that's part of the game that developers play. That's part of their strategic advantage that we have to act quickly. So that's, I don't think that will change. I think that is just the way of the lay of the land. Yes, Christine.
It often does really feel like we're almost being railroaded into rubber stamping things sometimes. But and the timing of things, and this is not a knock against Jay and Susmita at all, but the timing of these things feels like a, a tactic in a game. And that we're being put in a position where they're almost like daring us to not rubber stamp. Because we haven't had time to do our homework. We haven't had time to talk to people. We haven't had time. I mean, this literally showed up on our desks at what time? Like, I, I mean, this was, this is a huge thing that we had to talk about with, you know, with the platypus, with platypus, whatever. But, you know, it just, it just felt, it feels like we're being put in a position to just rubber stamp things. And I, I, I refuse to believe that's just our job.
Well, look at, look at the law because the law gives us 35 days from beginning to end. So, and that starts with Susmita when she gets the paperwork. So we don't really, that's not going to change. I don't think.
Do we call special meetings? I mean, like if things, if things are being given to us literally hours before a meeting, don't we have the ability to call a special meeting and give ourselves more time to understand what's being asked of us? And to ask questions of the staff? I mean, can't we just table it and ask for a special meeting?
Which one are you talking about?
35 day time period.
I'm confused. Which, which item on the agenda did you think was presented hours before?
What, what, what was in it? The, no, maybe it wasn't platypus. Which one was it? I'm sorry, I might be wrong on that one. I apologize. Which one was given to us? Was it yesterday?
No, that was just a staff report that was given to you, but the item on the agenda was given to you. Yeah. I'm sorry about the confusion too, because usually Jay is, Jay and I work very well that way. Like whenever something gets added up on zoning commission's public hearing agenda, he immediately puts in the planning box and whenever I'm going to send the agenda and the materials, I send everything together. I typically wait because sometimes we get these subdivision review applications, like just two weeks in advance. Like just in time for public hearing advertisements and all. But I don't think it's a big item I would ever put you in a position where you have to take your decision in a day or hours before. This eight dash 24 could have gone without a staff review or report too. It's not mandatory. But I thought it would be beneficial for you to know in writing what the conservation superintendent said and what the town engineer said and how their opinions, you know, convey to you in some format.
Right. But I guess my question still stands, like, like if there's an item, if there's an item that we feel like we need further deliberation on, further, further, you know, input on can we call a special meeting to, within that 35 day period to, okay. So, so when things like this are brought to us, we don't necessarily have to vote on it. Today, if we call the special meeting, we, we can call a special meeting to take it up and buy us more time to make an informed decision, correct?
The only problem, Christine, the only problem is normally zoning is the following day after our meeting. So it's not like we can hold off on a vote because they're, they're going to be having that on their agenda the following day typically, right?
I mean, they can have a, I mean, if they don't have the recommendation from us, can't they table it or put it to a
I mean, they you're supposed to give your recommendation like right then. I mean, the statutory timelines say that in 35 days, you have to render your decision. So I think you will have some bigger room where the zoning commission can, you know, if by the next month it's still only 33 days, then you still have the time to actually, you know, hold a special meeting. So I don't want to throw out the timelines like this because I don't have my statutory guide with me. And those timelines are pretty like for every item, you have 35 days, 65 days and separate time windows. But generally speaking, you don't have to render your decision in one day. I mean, to the zoning commission too. If an application has come before you and you have to render a decision in 35 days, you would still have some time and you can convey that to the zoning commission that you need more time. And they, they can actually hold special meetings too.
And in some instances though, the zoning can vote without getting our, when we are in advisory situation, they don't have to follow our advice, which means they can vote without waiting for our advice.
Oh, no. I think by state statutes, they, they are typically given 35 days. And after that, a no decision means automatically approved. But you do have that time window where you, your decision is required.
If we do a special meeting, does that have to be advertised?
Yeah.
If it's a public, yeah, special meeting has to be advertised. But if it's a public meeting, it has separate legal, you know, advertisements that have to be dealt with.
So the earliest we could do, if we want if we want a special meeting after tonight, it would be next Tuesday would be the earliest we could do it, correct?
Administrative items and making sure that it doesn't conflict with, right now, we can hold any time because we are not using the council chambers. But if we were to use the council chambers, we have to see what other meetings are holding place there.
Thank you. Are we ready for a motion to adjourn?
We are ready for a motion. Listen, guys, I have to tell you, I'm very proud of how everyone handled tonight. Thank you. And I hope the audience went away feeling like we were trying to do our best for them. So.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll say it to anybody.
Thank you.
Hi.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you, Susmita.
Good night. Good night. Thank you.
Oh, wait a sec.
Yes.
People left. I was told that John's son died.
Yes.
So if anybody has his email, if you want to send him a message of support.
Who died?
John.
So
John Staley.
John Staley's son.
Son. Oh, gosh, that's awful.
Yeah. So sort of a personal thing with him. I had a discussion with him. So, yeah, I think just sitting, thinking about him, you know, would be, would be fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Well, if you speak with him, Dan, tell him I send my best.
I will. I will. I'll do that.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.